Trustee Harvey?
Here.
Trustee Reeves?
Here.
Trustee Gaines?
Here.
Trustee Buffalo?
Here.
Trustee Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comments on closed session. Pursuant to Board policy number two three five zero, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter of agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or the recording secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comments.
Somebody has done havoc in the minions. They got stuff all over the floor, like soap and stuff. They were just being destructive.
Oh, okay.
I was asked to have everyone turn their mic on too when they talk, but you did, sir. Thank you, sir. Just one more, just so. So much.
Painting up my door is good.
My momma's calling me dinky.
Okay, we will now reconvene to public session. Roll call.
Student trustee Salazar Lara?
Here.
Trustee Harvey?
Here.
Trustee Reeves?
Here.
Trustee Gaines?
Here.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Buffalo, will you please listen to the pledge?
Pleasure. Hand over your heart, turn and face the flag, and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Advice?
Approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Oh, sorry, report of closed session item. We did have one report out of closed session. In connection with perp case number LACE 6549, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement with the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers. Where in exchange for dismissal of the action, the district will compensate affected faculty for intercession. On a motion by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Buffalo, the vote was four to one with trustees Adams, Reeves, Gaines, and Buffalo in favor and trustee Harvey against. Copies of the settlement agreement are available in the district office. Thank you. Now I can do the public comment announcements. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or the recording secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the boardroom, from the recording secretary, or online. I do have public comment cards for the opens. Dr. Greg Langyard.
Thank you, trustees, for your service. Because I feel the need to speak here more often, I'd like to quickly introduce myself. I'm a professor of communication studies, ironically working to mask a stuttering speech impediment. I have some other atypical learning differences like a lot of our students. For a number of reasons, I know what it's like to be the kind of student who can fall through the gaps. I have a background as a community organizer and program director. I also recently taught a class for the Lancaster State Prison Bachelor's Degree Program on Critical Approaches to Organizational Design, where we look at how institutions like the US Constitution and education system survive and adapt over time. I was raised in deep faith and strong work ethic. I believe in rich collaboration with productive dialogue, and to that end, I watch virtually every board meeting and I follow your word very closely. As you know, our equity programs do more than highlight the diversity of our campus. Equity is about closing gaps. Faculty in the college have been told Antelope Valley College is doing something with equity no other college has done. And honestly, we think that can be a fantastic thing. But faculty and academic leadership have largely been left out of the conversation about how this happens. Faculty and students who have been deeply involved in equity-centered work on this campus for years are perplexed and sometimes distressed. A significant and expensive reorganization of these efforts, which again existed at the college long before we had an Office of Equity and Student Achievement, has unfortunately not appeared to produce positive improvement to equity programming. In some cases, other operations at the college are suffering because of a lack of cohesion with these efforts, including students' schedules here on the main campus. Institutional knowledge and the organizational efficiency it offers appear to have been overlooked, sometimes in favor of visually appealing optics. And I know this college can do better. To that end, I want to thank trustee Harvey for asking for the concrete, specific details the public and college have a right to. And I want to thank trustee Reeves for recommending an open forum to discuss the college's finances. I think transparency would be a really, really good place to start. And from there, I think collaboration, cohesion, and efficiency are within reach. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jason Bone.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, great to see you, trustee Harvey. I hope you enjoyed your summer and your family. An incident occurred with someone important to me at 4:00 AM Sunday morning, and I had to call 911. I pushed the three buttons, 911, for the first time in my life. I was given directions by the dispatcher, which I followed. I got dressed while on the phone waiting for the paramedics to arrive. Shortly, six men were in my house and they took over. They asked questions and made suggestions I had to get out of the way. And I was surprised at the immediate trust I had, trust I had to have for this process to work that ensured the best possible outcome. In the end, they rewarded my trust. The ride and the ambulance was the same. I trusted every decision. I had to have that trust. When we arrived at the emergency room, nurses attended without delay. They worked with urgency, skill, and compassion. I trusted them. I had to have trust in them, and again, my trust was rewarded. Finally, the doctor arrived and gave a diagnosis derived from all of the tests performed that morning. The diagnosis explained everything, and I was relieved. In those critical hours, I put my faith in each of these people, the paramedics, the nurses, the doctor, and at every step, they proved worthy of that trust. That is how trust is supposed to work. You put your faith in someone's expertise, their integrity, their intentions, and they rise to the occasion. I have no such trust in this administration. We cannot trust the decisions this administration makes. You're entrusted with the education of this community, with the livelihoods of our faculty and staff, and with the safety of our students, yet your actions betray that trust. You violate the public trust when you treat employees as expendable instead of as the people they are, people with families, people who were once students themselves, people who have given years, sometimes decades, of their lives to this college. You violate the public trust when you cannot even trust your own legal advice, when you go looking not for fairness, not for truth, but for a legal excuse to justify misconduct. Most of the time, problems here aren't caused by malice. They're misunderstandings. They're human. And misunderstandings require dialogue, not discipline. They require trust, not suspicion. But time and again, this administration has chosen suspicion, retaliation, and cover-up over transparency, fairness, and trust. If I can put much trust in strangers at four in the morning to ensure the safety of those most important to me, it should not be too much to expect that the people running this college can be trusted to do the right thing every time. Yet you have shown again and again that you cannot. And until that changes, you will not have my trust, nor the trust of the people you claim to serve. However, if you seek my trust, there's an easy way to obtain that. And that is by simply meeting your legal obligations. Thank you.
Perry Jalica.
Good evening to the board and presidents-elect.
Sir, apologies. Is this about the consent agenda or is this a non-agendized item?
The consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. You'll be called up.
Sorry.
I apologize. It was, yeah. Sorry, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that. We will now move on to presentations. Intercollegiate Athletics Presentation.
I just wanted to share some highlights from this past fiscal year, from 2024, 2025. The first thing that I would like to do is actually invite up our men's head baseball coach and talk about his success this season, where the 2025 men's baseball team reached playoffs, which was actually breaking a 56-year drought in the postseason.
Hey, everybody. What an unbelievable building this is. Brand-new building. I gave a tour here today. Third floor's got study cubes. Amazing. Yeah, I want to congratulate our team and just kind of talk about some highlights from this year. First of all, at Antelope Valley College, it feels very good and rewarding to go down to the heart of LA and beat those teams. You know, we, thank you. We've got something going on here with both of our sports. And Cindy's here with her incredible athletes, and I've got Bo Parisi and Ozzy Sanchez here. And I'm only trying to learn from Cindy because she's been doing it for so long. But we've been able, this last year especially, been able to go down and cause some waves, and I'm really proud of that. We were 27 and 13. First playoff appearance since 1969. Nine conference award winners. There's 88 teams that play baseball at the junior college level in California. We were first in walks drawn. We were second in runs scored. We were 16 and 5 at home, very difficult. We like playing here in the Antelope Valley. We've been very difficult to beat here. And every sophomore that we had transferred to a four-year school. Thank you. And a lot of that happens because of the way that we operate. We have a new athletic director. I'd like to formally invite or formally accept him into the college, even though you guys already have. He's done fantastic work. He's done a fantastic job so far. And so if we can continue to do that, we can continue to produce teams like this. And really, I have one more thing to say. I've coached a few places in my career, and I remember we needed to win one of our final three games of the season in order to clinch a playoff spot. So that was a very long week for me and my family. But we rode out a lineup in that night game against Bakersfield, and we had six freshmen in it. We were young, and it was just really, really nice to see the youth movement and the way that our players represented the school. I couldn't be more proud of them. And I couldn't be more proud to be an instructor here and your head baseball coach. So thank you very much.
Coach Moses, would you please introduce your players? And these guys, you both got some wonderful awards, I believe. And so please share all of that wonderful news. Thank you.
I guess the head coach should never forget about his I guess the head coach should never forget about his players. Yeah, so I'm going to have them come up. So Bo Perici and Ozzie Sanchez, come on up. These gentlemen went to Courtsville High School, and they're really good pitchers. And then one of them got hurt, and he'll help us a lot next year. But I don't know if they want to talk, so I'm kind of saving them, unless you decide they have to. But they were tremendous performers for us and represented our school the right way with integrity and with great grades in the classroom. I'm super proud of them. So this is those guys.
All right. Thank you, Coach. Next, I would like to bring up Cindy Vargas, the head softball coach.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So a few of our athletes were able to make it. I just wanted to recognize them for all of their hard work this season. We had nine named to the All-Conference Team. Those here tonight are Annalise Memory, Mia Romero, Jeanette Camarena, Marissa Rodriguez, Natalia Hernandez, and Kaylee Moreno. Natalia was also named to the All-Southern California Team. So that's a huge honor in our sport. I'd also like it to take a few moments to recognize, recently, the NFCA announced the All-American Academic Team, and we had several players who received that award. They needed to maintain a 3.5 GPA over the 2024-25 season. Those two in attendance today are Kaylee Moreno and Annalise Memory. And then last but not least, super, super excited for this one. I want to recognize Annalise Memory. She has earned one of the most prestigious honors in the sport of softball. Only nine student athletes are awarded this in the whole entire state. It's by position, and she earned the Golden Glove for Right Field. Really, really, really proud of that accomplishment. I believe, I'm sure, she is the first student athlete at Antelope Valley College to receive that award. So very, very proud of her. Proud of all these young ladies. I want to thank you so much for all of your support, and we look forward to another exciting season next season. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Which one's the clicker? All right, thank you, Coach. I'm not doing all right. There we go. All right. So thank you, coaches, for sharing that with us. Pretty much what I want to get into is just some of the successes that we've had this past year. I can't take any credit on this because I wasn't here. I was just graciously offered the position about four months ago. So Ben Partey was the athletic director at the time. So this is a lot of his hard work, and I hope to carry this on into the next year. But 10 of our 16 teams got to participate in postseason. So that's giving 120 student athletes the opportunity to actually experience postseason, which a lot of schools don't get to do. To have 10 out of 16 is tremendous, and I'm hoping to maybe push it to 11 or plus this upcoming year. So with our All-Conference Awards, obviously Cindy and Brian got to go over a few, but we had 54 student athletes, and that's only from the coaches that actually responded to my emails to get the information. So I'm thinking there's a little bit more, but 54 is a massive number, along with having 37 student athletes across 16 programs, giving academic all-conference. And so the big thing I kind of want to talk about is the Learning Center. So Ashley Hawkins is here. Say hi.
Hi.
Okay. So coming in, I've got to spend a lot of time with Ashley, working on some programs. And something that I implemented last year was working with the Student Athletic Academic Achievement Zone, where athletes have to complete a certain number of hours of tutoring and study. So this actually increased our GPA and moving us up. So if you looked on the CalPass data, we were ranked 81st. And in one year, we jumped up to 30th, just from that GPA increase. So this has been doing from private tutoring sessions. We're going to go into group tutoring sessions. We've actually all get that into the achievement zone that actually moved into the Marauders Campus. So we actually have a tutoring zone in the Athletic Center, the Athletic Rudder Center. We'll talk about that in a few more slides. But we do weekly reports also that kind of gives us a warning on students that need a little bit more help or a class that they're struggling in, so we can actually fine-tune and focus on their GPA, making sure they're being successful in the classroom. So again, I want to say thank you to Ashley and thank you to Josh as well. I know Josh isn't here, so. So I create a little chart if this were to click, where to work. James? There we go. Thanks, James. So just kind of showing the GPAs from teams across the board. So just showing that a lot of us, a lot of the teams either increased, or they stayed about average, or some dropped a little bit. But with the increases in these numbers, I went over more data, and now the screen just turned off. There we go. So looking at this, what I'm showing is, again, this is all coming down to the hard work of the student athletes and the commitment from the coaches focusing on the student athletes and having them go to the zone, is looking at our full-time, out of all of our student athletes, 91 of them are full-time. Only 9% are not. I'm sorry, 91%. 9% meaning those are the ones that are gray shirts or ones that are looking to maybe not use a year of eligibility. They still want to participate in athletics, but they're not a full-time athlete, so they can't really participate on the field or court or track. But 91% of all of our student athletes are full-time. If you look over on the right side, I compared them to the ABC average ABC student, along with actually overall statewide. So we can kind of see a comparison in how ABC really is thriving when it comes to in the classroom. All right, so we look at 91% are full-time. Full-time students on ABC's campus is about 29%, and part-time is about 71%. If you look at transferable units, I couldn't pull the data from the overall student body, but 1,329 transferable units were completed by athletics. That's 87% of transferable math and English, where the average student takes about 75%. Statewide is about 58%. Just comparing it to statewide for athletics, we are 1% more, right? So our students are going above and beyond. If you look at the average GPA, we're at 3.12. The average GPA statewide for athletics is 2.9. So again, we're above the curve. If you compare that with the average ABC student, they're at 2.8, and the non-student is at about 2.8 as well. So again, athletics, we're really focusing on the classroom as long as the courts and the field. If you look at the attempted units that we take, we try to push our athletes to take more units than 12, because it only takes 12 to be able to compete. But what happens if during a semester, they're taking, they have to drop a class, or they end up failing a class after withdrawal, they would be ineligible. So we always encourage them to take extra classes just in case they need to drop back. So this actually helps them actually transfer faster if they are able to compete those units. So we take 28 units attempted. That's for the full year. And that statewide is about the average. But if you look at the average student, it's about 16.6 or 12 units for the year. So just being on track to complete their GPA and to get to their transfer. Our completion rate is at 88, so about 89% of all our classes that they go, they compete, they complete. So we finish, the average student athlete has 24 units at the end of the year. Statewide is about 22 in athletics in general. So again, ABC is better than that. The completion rate for ABC students is about 80%, and then statewide is about 10% of all classes taken, units that is. I keep saying percent. I'm sorry. So all our athletes that are on track to transfer, get a degree, or finish their ed plan is 92%. All right, so the average athletic, the average student is about 78%. Again, thank you, Ashley. And that also comes down to our athletic achievement. We have to thank our counselors. So we have Tisha. We have one full-time counselor, and I've, this is my fourth junior college that I've got to work with in athletics. To see that we have a full-time counselor, we have one full-time ed advisor, and we have a clerical staff that works just strictly to make sure that all ed plans are on file, all athletes are on the path they need to succeed, not just on the classroom, but to be able to move into the next step. I've never seen that anywhere else. So to have that much support is just tremendous. And I know Coach said that, I didn't know that number. That's why I said 60-plus. I wish you would have told me that we had, most of our sophomores are transferring, but we have 60-plus student athletes that are transferring. I always say plus because I know there's more that, because there's people that get back to me. But I want to thank Coler Rojas, who's the dean over counseling, and Tisha's our full-time athletic counselor, and then Erica Reyes, and then Gwyneth Preston, who's been here forever, but she just retired, and she's going to be very, very missed. But she's been a huge part of athletic success. And then, James, I'm going to, there we go. And so we're going to want to start back our Student Athletic Advisory Council. We want to have our student athletes tell us where we are falling short, where we can improve. We want to know what they enjoy about being an athlete here at Antelope Valley College, but we also want to know where we can improve and what we can do better. That's the whole point of this, is because we don't want to stay complacent. We want to do everything we can to make the experience for our student athletes the best it can be. And so I wanted to keep, put these dates out there, and I wanted to actually kind of cement these dates, because I would like the board members, if you would like to join on these days, if you could, we're going to serve lunch and have, we don't have a time yet, because we've got to make sure it fits with their schedules for classes and practices and events. But I would like to have, it's going to be open for anybody that would like to come and just listen to hear what the student athletes have to say and get their feedback of where we could be better. Are you guys clicking this now? All right. So we're planning on hosting a few events. So one of the events that we just hosted was a media day. As you know, most colleges have a media day where they have photographers come in. But so this year, we had a professional photographer come in, where we did headshots. We also did action shots. So that took place last week. We're going to have them again for the end of the fall semester for basketball and the beginning of the spring for our spring sports. And from what I've heard, softball does a great media day. So I'm excited to see this go down. A couple of things I want to bring up is we have our student athlete orientation. So I believe it's the first time that ABC has hosted this. I believe there's a lot of resources on this campus, not just for student athletes, but for all students, that can help them succeed in the classroom, on the field, or just even mental health outside of the classroom or off-campus. There's a lot of things that ABC offers that I don't think our student athletes know about or understand how to achieve these supports. So I'm actually having an orientation day where I've had a lot of different departments come, and they're going to go, and they're going to give all the information to student athletes, so they actually understand all the support that they can have on campus. The second thing that we're going to do, hopefully at the end of this semester during Thanksgiving, is we want to do kind of collab with ASO to do a marauder Thanksgiving burn the bird. So I want to actually have a, like a turkey trot here on our campus, where we're going to go and have it in the stadium, where the goal is to get as many community members on this campus as possible to highlight athletics, to highlight our facilities, to highlight our campus. All right, I mean, there's a lot of people here that don't understand that we have a track, or we have pickleball courts, we have tennis. They're like, oh, yeah, we know there's a school there. I've never been on it, right? So it's not just for students, it's not just for student athletes, but we want the community to be here as well, so we can share it with them. We want to, I know the golf tournament started up last year, so our goal is to bring that back this year and continue to push that golf tournament, because it's just a great way to intervene with the community. And then we want to do our Hall of Fame, where we're able to highlight previous alumni in athletics, not just athletically, but also if they're doing something great in their career. And I think those are all for the events. And so some of the facilities updates that I wanted to bring up is, so as you know, I've been here for four months, and every time I go on any sort of meeting where it comes to, you know, athletics to the state, everyone welcomes me like, oh, welcome, Joel, as the new athletic director. But they're always saying, your facilities are unreal. They always talk about the facilities. So our goal is to upkeep these facilities and make them as good as possible and keep them longevity, right? So we got some new netting for the, for track and field. The tennis ball, the tennis court and pickleball courts got resurfaced. We're putting in new team locker rooms. I believe the lockers are being installed today. Where's Noe? Yeah, they're being installed today. I'm keeping the clock on you. So in the gym, so we have new team rooms for our men's and women's basketball, men's and women's volleyball. And then as well as, we already kind of talked about it, but the Student Athletic Achievement Zone Tutoring Center that will be at the Marauders Complex. So the last thing I want to kind of lead you with is just kind of where we can see athletics going growth-wise, where it comes to sports in general. So the number-one sport right now growing is flag football. Women's flag football, if we brought that to the campus, that would be about 40-plus full-time female athletes. And if you look at the chart, if you look at the fall, we have 118, this is as of last year, we had 118 male athletes into 47. So that would bring us up to 118 male athletes to 87 female athletes. Women's wrestling. So on CC Apply, when we have students around the state that are looking for colleges to go to, they can actually select, hey, yeah, I would like to play a sport. This valley thrives in women's wrestling, right? Men's wrestling as well, but we want to bring in women's first, just to be Title IX compliant, and then men's will come in. But instantly, if we were to bring wrestling, men's or women's, we'd be state contenders within the first year, from the success that we've had with the high schools and the want that is needed here in this valley. After that, we would like to bring in E-Teams. So E-Teams is a co-ed, so you're looking at about 15 male and 15 female spring sport, spring athletes. So that would bring our total up to about 220-plus males to about 180-plus females, which would almost put us right there at that Title IX compliance is what we're looking for. And then that's all I have for you. So I just want to say thank you for all your support. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Mr. Reeves. That was an incredible presentation, Mr. Director. And I want to congratulate everybody here that's affiliated with the athletic department. You guys are great.
Thank you very much. That was a great question. I appreciate your support.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
11.2 Information Technology Services Presentation.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, student trustee, President Zellet, members of the public. The Information Technology Services Team is a wonderful group of dedicated professionals that support the district from behind the scenes. So this is going to be our annual presentation here. I have Daniel Connor, interim executive director of ITS. He's going to walk you through all, some of the great work that they do. Not all of it, but some of it.
Good evening. Before we dive into the presentation, I'd like to share with you a little bit about my journey. My career in technology started right here at Antelope Valley College, in a classroom where I took my very first programming class. And at the time, I didn't realize how much it would shape my future, but that single class ignited a passion that led me into software development and eventually into IT leadership. Now having the opportunity to serve ABC isn't just a professional milestone, it's deeply personal. This campus helped shape who I am. It's a privilege to now lead a team of dedicated professionals who make an impact on students' lives every day. Okay, so today, I'm going to share where we stand as a department, the challenges we faced, our progress, and we'll begin with an overview of our ITS organization and staffing hurdles, then cover major cybersecurity investments and key accomplishments. I'll highlight current projects, our fraud mitigation efforts, and our pivot to artificial intelligence-driven tools for stronger fraud detection. And we'll wrap up with what's next for fraud detection at ABC and how we're preparing for the future. So our Information Technology Services Department is organized into three key areas. Enterprise applications, technology operations, and instructional support services, which falls under technology operations. This structure allows us to specialize while staying connected as one team. The enterprise applications team manages core systems like Banner, EdgeNav, reporting tools and integrations, ensuring secure and efficient data flow to both academic and administrative needs. Technology operations manages our infrastructure, networks, servers, cybersecurity, and devices. And within this group, instructional support services provides direct support through help desk, classroom technology, lab environments, ensuring a responsive and student-focused experience. Our team includes 30 skilled IT professionals working behind the scenes and on the front lines, committed to excellence, collaboration, and advancing the college through technology. Labor market conditions are challenging our hiring efforts. Many private sector employers offer higher salaries, flexible schedules, including remote and hybrid, making it difficult for public institutions to compete, especially in technology. Our local talent pool is also limited, especially for advanced technical roles. And I have a couple examples of our hiring challenges. Our database administrator retired after spending Our database administrator retired after spending twenty years here at Antelope Valley College, and since then, we've had seven failed recruitments, and we're going on our eighth. And our system security administrator role also has remained unfilled despite multiple postings. These gaps strain staff and operations, increasing workloads, delaying projects, slowing innovation, and raising burnout risk. When seasoned employees leave, we also lose critical institutional knowledge. So despite these staffing challenges, the department continues to deliver, completing projects, supporting operations, and achieving more with less. We've implemented multi-factor authentication across the board to protect accounts and reduce unauthorized access, and expanded security awareness and training programs, ensuring everyone can recognize threats and take action to safeguard our systems. Cybersecurity isn't just a technology issue, it's also a people issue. So we're making sure everyone knows how to spot threats and take action. We've upgraded network and system infrastructure, we've patched vulnerabilities, and we've modernized our environment for greater security and resilience. Core system updates have improved performance, strengthened security controls, and enhanced protection. We've deployed advanced threat detection tools to identify and address risks early and improved compliance and governance by implementing new platforms and conducting regular assessments to ensure alignment with regulatory requirements and best practices. Our team has delivered thousands of technology support services and device deployments, ensuring students, faculty, and staff have the tools they need to succeed. We've migrated core systems to modern platforms, including Microsoft O three sixty-five, improving collaboration and reliability. Business processes have been streamlined through reporting tools, automation, and better queue management, saving time and boosting efficiency. We've supported institutional operations with event and technical uh services that keep classrooms, events, and daily activities running smoothly. And on the compliance front, we've met regulatory requirements and completed major state initiatives. We've also advanced system upgrades and modernization, strengthening critical platforms and infrastructure to meet current and future needs. Alright, so we've made a major progress in expanding and improving our systems through the rollout of self-service Banner nine. We are officially live with employee self-service, and the remaining self-service modules will uh go live by the end of September. And this new platform gives users a more modern intuitive experience with better functionality and easier access to information. We've also started the implementation of DegreeWorks. We expect to be ready to go live with a pilot group this next year. In addition, we've conducted a phone system assessment, and we will be kicking off a new implementation of a new phone system in short order. So next, we're gonna talk about fraud mitigation efforts. Um in recent years, fraudulent activity targeting the college, especially through CCC Apply, has increased. Bad actors have applied through CCC Apply, gained ABC dot edu email access, and have sold those email accounts on the dark web. To counter this, we added an orientation requirement, adding verification and making the fake account creation harder. Fraud surged again when her funding created a financial incentive for false enrollments. I T S responded by blocking high-risk applications, using I P data, and placing automated holds on those accounts. Faculty also helped by reporting suspicious classroom behavior, enabling early detection. And I T S, working closely with Enrollment Services, has used data analysis to identify patterns and implement processes to protect system integrity. Alright, so in fall of twenty twenty-four, we experienced a major spike in enrollment fraud that triggered an urgent campus-wide response. Faculty were flagging suspicious accounts on a daily basis, and the I T S team dedicated hundreds of hours to analyzing enrollment data and behavior data. Through this effort, we identified and removed approximately four thousand seven hundred fraudulent enrollments. To strengthen our response moving forward, we implemented Socure, an artificial intelligence-powered fraud detection platform. Uh we finished this implementation in December of twenty twenty-four. Um we integrated Socure with our local systems to automatically place holds on high-risk accounts and block access to financial aid and registration when fraud was detected. We also built on the tools and reporting processes that we already had in place, using them to enhance detection and streamline our response, making it faster and more effective as new threats emerged. Uh this table shows the number of fraudulent enrollments we identified across recent terms. The peak occurred in fall of twenty twenty-four with over four thousand seven hundred cases. Uh by intercession twenty twenty-five, um the enrollment fraud that we detected dropped significantly to just thirteen cases. And while there's been a slight spike in spring of twenty twenty-five, the numbers have continued to decline in summer and fall of twenty twenty-five. Uh these results reflect the impact of our new fraud prevention tools and business processes. Alright, so the Chancery's office is providing a discounted rate for a new fraud detection system, LightLeap dot A I, to community colleges for three thousand five hundred dollars per year. We are going to. Only the goal is to always find the, find opportunities to improve our technical and business processes so we can ensure real students have opportunities to succeed at Antelope Valley College. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Reeves? Uh the fraud that you detected, was it trying to get financial aid or was it trying to get in the system and destroy the system?
Um so the, um so the, the, the fraud that we had detected, as we had detected enrollment fraud, there's really three different types of fraud. Um there's application fraud, enrollment fraud, and financial aid fraud. And so, so we, we blocked them from, um from, um from enrolling and, and if they would have been able to enroll, they, they likely would have tried to apply for financial aid as well.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines?
First of all, I wanna say thank you to your, to the I T department for the labor-intensive work you've done since fall of twenty-four to forty-seven hundred is a significant number of fraudulent cases. I love the fact that as we progressed up to summer past session, um do you think the, this fraudulent, these fraudulent cases have had uh a dire impact on our students who are enrolling, who are not pursuing any type of fraudulent or not trying to get fraudulent uh financial aid? Because I'm hearing out there, I often have students come to me asking me for what they can do or how they can go around things. Uh I'm hearing that there was some delays in enrollment. Can you sort of, was that the case or, or are these students just thinking there were delays?
I am, I, I'm not sure about the delays, but I could, I could definitely do some research and get back with you. Um what um what we did find in, in prior semesters, especially in um in, in, in fall of twenty-four, uh when a new section would open up, it would, it would get filled almost instantaneously. And, and, and then so that, that, that led us to believe, okay, something fishy is going on, and then my team would do research and they, they would identify, okay. Um as, as we would do the research and then we would get more information and we, and, and we would ultimately do more research. So to answer your question, I think, think yes, in prior, in prior semesters, I think the fraudulent students who were getting into classes, was, it was preventing real students from getting into sections.
And so I could offer a little bit more there. Um I T S is the frontline, and then when fraudulent accounts are spotted, um we have folks in Enrollment Services who follow through verifying that there's an actual human there. And so when fraudulent accounts get flagged, sometimes there is a, a little bit of a time. For them coming in. Someone and, and verifying that it's an. Little bit of time that passed as we, uh our, our folks all across the camp.
Thank you for the great work.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Student Trustee.
I just wanted to ask in regards to.
So, so with, um with so, so secure, secure uh flags, applications with a handful of different statuses, and so reject is one of the statuses. And it, and it, and it, and it's, 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 it's based on a lot of different criteria, but ba, but base, but basically there's several, there's several different flags that are flagged between zero percent and a hundred percent. And so, so uh, so re, so when a student is flagged, flagged as reject, there is a high probability that they are a fraudulent student. And, 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 and the, the data that we've been reviewing since we, since we have gone live with this uh has validated that for us.
If we could pause for just a moment, it appears that every time the screen is cutting out here, our interpreters are unable to hear us. So is there, is there going to be something we can do to?
The X-tron matrix is malfunctioning. The, the screens here will work, but the interpreter um will not be able to see us. I don't know if it'll stream to Zoom. It's still streaming, so.
Is there a phone at that desk they could hear through the system or is there a way for the interpreters?
It's internal, but she's, but she's, will she be able to, will we be able to see?
Are you all seeing that, are you all seeing the chat message that we're seeing?
We're communicating with it at the moment.
Okay.
At this point, the matrix is also handling the sound that's going to them, so you can see what you're.
Just the, um, do, do, sir, do you, do you wanna take a few minute research and then work it out or, or just carry on?
Uh do you think you can get it resolved within a few minutes if we took a break? In that case, we will take a ten-minute break.
No problem.
It's actually very distracting the way that.
I guess.
Probably. Why do they keep making money? They'll keep making them.
And we'll probably have a hundred and twenty degree heat.
Um can you hear me?
Where she, oh, she.
Says yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna give this a try.
We'll give it a try.
Uh things will probably be quiet. I'm gonna put you guys close to the uh dais so you can hear mainly the board members. Chat us and let us know how this goes. If it ends up still being a problem, we'll try another solution. Yes, you are still visible on YouTube.
Okay, uh we are now through our technical problems, hopefully. And uh we'll move on to item twelve, consent agenda. May your approval for the consent agenda by unanimous consent.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, I have one to honor. Very good. Twelve point three.
Any board president select, uh thank you for a few minutes. I was going through the uh, I mean, I haven't done this uh very much, I'm Perry select, I teach record.
Looking to the agenda, the board agenda on personnel Thursday, thought that there was a sign to say to uh a head coach for college show thanks, high school, I did, I did, um my local high school meetings, uh special education flag football game. P O C for glager products and in the, in the, in a round of about ten dollars, seven hundred and thirty-seven top. There's a couple concerns, the, the site there outside the collective bargaining agreement, in the collective bargaining, a lot of them they did. In the collective bargaining agreement, a lot of them, they, they fall under, except for most of their recruit, that's already is there. And so are we double paying for that? If it, if it's not, if it's something that is not a part of that, uh, but when I look under what part of recruiting, I think the fall from the base. Then the bigger concern is just, I think it's great if we can pay coaches that 190, 190 hours for 190 hours, two months' work. But it should go to all head coaches. Those are very similar responsibilities that all the head coaches do here, put on, put on athletics, or work athletics, put on show face, put on cans, and different things. And that's happened for years. So that needs to be equitable. And, and with just one doing it, that's not equitable. And as we know, uh, equity in athletics is really important. Right? With the CBA, how it lightly states how coaches are paid in the sports that ABC. That makes them like sports when you, when, when you're looking at equity, Title IX, those type of things. Okay, so again, this is not an opportunity for, you know, not questioning the work that's being done. Not even really questioning the payment. I think it's often quick to pay some people over the summer 119 hours for two months' work extra. Because there is a lot of things, when you're in education and you're in coaching, you do a lot of things for free. That's just part of it. You know, it is, whether it's teachers, coaches, managers, you do, do things for free when your education is about students. And this case, about doing athletes. But the, the, the issue here is not questioning it, it's transparency. If one coach was given this kind of opportunity in the off school, it should be given to all coaches, all head coaches. Or at least offered to them. Then that's, you know, that would be equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask student administration, if that matters, to work back to that.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to stress 12.4 to find the person who ordered Cecil. And I'd like to bring up two things that are on the person who ordered Cecil. Uh, $35,000 already. A classification for, uh, community college admissions, $860,000. A payment to US Bank, so $867,000. The foundation to community college, $112,000. And two items, like the term is, uh, spell by, you know, we're paying $100,000. And while I was paying $100,000, and I have no idea how many students could use their services to merit that type of fee. Desert Haven, uh, we're paying $144,000. Uh, Business Machine was there, $131,000. SoCal Gas, $568,000. Southern California Edison, we're paying 2.5 million. That all these, uh, business orders under 12.4 on 8.5 million dollars. And 6.2 of it comes from the general fund. So I just want to point that out, uh, to anybody who's lost, thank you.
As general.
Any further discussion? Advice? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Action item, 13.1, approval of continued procurement of workers' compensation for non-service services from PM and employees for workers' compensation. Should I stay here motion?
So moved, sir.
Discussion? Advice?
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. 13.2, approval amendment number five, promotion service agreement between McDougal, Palmer, Foley, Tyler, Mitchell, and Erickson. The professional corporation panel valley community college district, if we sponsor legal services and Title IX, Gary decision making. May I hear motion? So moved.
Second.
And then we have one caller, strong, or Dr. Tom, 13.2.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board, the president, the select, Mr. Wong, Michelle, Charlotte, Cora, and C. So tonight's agenda asks you to approve the total of $975,000 in legal spending increases for 2025 alone. So that's what that, according to my calculations, that's what that would add. In other words, that's nearly a million dollars in increases in one year. State of colleges, uh, general funds diverted from our students, our classrooms, and our programs, and forwarded to outside council. And this is for four law firms, where in the past, that one. Imagine what $975,000 could do for the Rising Sappers program. Fund dedicated faculty to science, actually grant metrics, provide every best foot stipends, ensure transportation assistance for those driving long distances. And establish a paid peer mentorship network, staff in evening and weekend resource center. So working students are never stood out of support. These aren't dreams, they are tangible life-changing uses for the money. Instead, the district is choosing to keep law firms on the table. Four, not to protect students or to serve the college, in my opinion, but to avoid accountability and fair treatment of employees. Had three Title IX investigations conclude this year alone. And reasons for recurrent increases are increasing Title IX hearings. Now, we've had three Title IX investigations conclude this year alone. Each one ended in a non-substantiation of the complaint. It was found that there was insufficient evidence to find the employees responsible for Title IX sexual harassment violations. The full investigative apparatus was sealed away when it was clear from the beginning, at least to me, that these, these are not Title IX issues here. Typically, the, the three conditions are good, broke, wrong, uh, unwanted sexual conduct, and sexual assault. So I, just knowing that, I look at the complaint and I say, this is not a Title IX complaint. I actually had a complaint submitted, which was a Title IX complaint, and it got kicked back. And, and I was told that it's gonna be a Title V complaint, which is appropriate in many of these cases. This does not sound skill or ship that is punitive governance within open checkbook. We've already heard the consequences of these misplaced priorities. On September 9th of last year, a student shared with you, "Well, I lost my job on campus and I struggled to stay enrolled." Another student shared, "Using my student worker position, I have to pay for books." These are the human costs of the choices, choices to send all of this money. And the not-to-exceed amount total, of course, the contract on the within say three law firms, is $6 million. Every dollar being spent outside the lawyers to perpetuate this culture is a dollar taken from a student who needs a book, a bus pass, a paycheck, or mentor. Reject this increase, I add. Choose some best of students, not in avoiding accountability. And remember this, college has been more than defending itself while lifting its students in college that has lost weight.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on that?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President. Dr. Bowen, uh, you know, I'm just dismayed and upset about legal costs, if you are. But, and I've said it many times before, if we get into a situation where we have to have legal advice to protect the college. We don't have authority, so we have to hire outside people to do it. And regrettably, a lot of these things, and you agree with me, maybe could be solved by discussion between different parties that are participating in this before it reaches the stage where we have to do investigation and hire lawyers. And that would change, you know, cause a lot of people, let's, to change their mindset, that, you know, maybe I should go in and talk to Dr. Gillette or the director of personnel about this, or, you know, we go through this process. I would like to see that done. I would like it, starting today, I would like to see the unions approach the president and the vice president unionists. Say, "We're gonna start out new on this. We're, we're gonna start from scratch. We're gonna discuss each issue before they get to the point where you need investigation. We're gonna respect the rights of all parties, going through the contract. But we're gonna take this human approach in the beginning before we go through the legal process." That's what I would, but that's, that's my world. The real world is, in the meantime, we have to protect the college, we have to hire.
Any further discussions? Advice?
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote?
No.
Passes with a 4-1 vote. Was that Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Is already, already well. 13.3, approval of interference to the annual compensate amount for legal services between F3 law and L Valley Community College District. May I hear more? Do I hear a second? For the purpose of the votes, I will second 13.3. Discussion? That's fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Board, I'd like you to read a series of emails. On August 4th, 125, Dr. Lawrence Helsker wrote to a faculty member. "I'm reaching out, and it was recently brought to my attention that you have a number of personal items in the area. All personal items that belong to you that are not inside the office that is assigned to you must be removed by August 13th. You will need to schedule a time with me in order to come to campus and retrieve your items. I will treat you about a deadline. We will contract with the company to pack, remove, and store your items at your distance. I appreciate your prompt attention to this urgent matter, and I will report hearing from soon. That faculty replied, "I'm currently out of town on family business, and I'd like to request a few more days to address this. The items there were approved by the dean at the time." Thank you. The faculty member was on the East Coast with their alien mother. On August 6th, Dr. Helsker replied, "I hope you enjoy your travels. Unfortunately, however, I'm unable to grant you extension and say items must be removed before the start of the academic year." The dean did not have the authorization to prevent you from leaving personal items on district property. If you are unable to have the items approved by the 13th, the district will make arrangements that will move them to storage at your distance. If I do not hear back from you by the vote of business today, Tuesday, August 6th, 2025, with your box, I will assume you want the district to engage with the company for removal and storage." I emphasize that the dean gave the faculty member permission to store their things at that location. Not only so, but they were there for a whole year. Not only was the knowledge of the dean, but the vice president of academic affairs involved with it. Item 13.3 is yet another increase in legal spending. The 2025 alone, I could see amounts of primary people across all four law side monitoring, the district now will take. These expanded expansions are not about legal necessity, it's about avoiding accountability and seismic obligations to treat employees fairly. Email by just red showed clearly, the faculty member with administrative permission stored parking on campus, even given a quote-unquote clean bill of health after a visit by Dr. Helsker in risk management. Nearly a year later, the district revoked that permission without wanting eight, nine days to remove it, knowing they were outside of state parent or alien mother. And when challenged, threatened to involve the sheriff and encounter property. That is not fairness, that is not passion, that is a ruthless approach to the current small matter with the legal battles, battles we all pay for. And these deals aren't just for defending the college, they are for pushing our own employees with intensity, pursuing our own employees with intensity that should be reserved for real threats to the institution. The more the district behaves this way, the more these costs rise. That money can strengthen programs like Rising Sappers, getting hook suits, face the justice system, instead of funding the system that grinds down our own people. The force within the cycle saw hiding behind law firms, the mid-appearance accountability matter. Thank you. I would like to set this for the record.
Any further discussion on 13.3?
Point of information, sir. For the record, the comments made by Dr. Bowen are unrelated to the item on the agenda and therefore should have been under non-agenda headings. It has nothing to do with the engagement of the law firm. And those emails, the comments were entirely written by them.
May I comment on that?
No, you may not.
Any further discussion on 13.3? Advice? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote?
No.
Passes with a 4-1 vote with Michelle, I agree with you, no. 13.4, approval of panel valley community college district's company using school access liability fund self for liability insurance and compliance with AB 218. May I hear motion?
So moved, sir.
Discussion? Advice? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. 13.5, approval of veteran understanding between UFW Foundation and L Valley College for providing immigration legal services to students effective November 1st, 2024, and June 30th, 2026. May I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President, I, I read this, and I did not see any proof that the, uh, UFW had submitted, uh, proof that they have insurance to cover them when they're on campus.
So all of that is verisign through our contact department, sir, and it doesn't make it to the form without all of those items being ordered. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. 13.6, approval of contract with Digital Promise Global for purposes of platform ready to study teaching and learning in introductory statistics classes, lived in or bound with the use of exemplary courseware. May I hear motion?
So moved.
Discussion?
Sorry, I just had a quick question. What does it mean, um, with or without the use of exemplary courseware?
Thank you for asking that question. And we thank our student trustee for engaging me in the session about this earlier. We have Dean Lobos up here, and actually, I can give you a high overview, and Dean Lobos, if you'd like to offer a little bit of detail. There, we have some faculty who are participating in their study with the Villamor with the Gates Foundation. And to look at, um, a software that is in design, um, and it's a teaching statistics software. And, uh, this agreement allows us to participate in their study, uh, to compare the success in more being students with and without the software. Is that?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dean Lobos. Thank you for working with faculty on this, thank you.
Any further discussions?
Yeah, I actually just wanted to clarify whether or not we're even student assume. Yes, so there is no cost to students for this. It is, uh, it's the, I'll be here for the entire classes, um, and I believe there's four sections that are.
There are four structures we're going to title this.
Yes.
Is, it's research phase. So during the research phase, it's entirely free. And then after the research study, the collective data, then it will be made available at a cost of $35. It's low cost. Yes.
Well, actually, I thought the Gates Foundation would pay you for the participation.
Yes, for the participation in the research study.
Oh, okay.
Yes. But afterwards, if we decide to implement the, uh, courseware, then that'll be at a low, at a low cost.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussions? Thank you. Advice? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. 13.7, approval of 2526 softball night officials fall scores scheduled. May I hear a motion?
So moved, sir.
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point eight, adopt for resolution, arguing direct association and contract with financial aid services LLC for special financial aid consulting services, may your motion?
Summon. Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point five, approval of contract with Meadow with Technologies Incorporated for net price stop delitorial services, may your motion?
Summon. Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point ten, approval of contract between Brandon Leaky Incorporated and Anl Valley Community College District for the keynote speaker for the fall twenty twenty five, opening day of fall twenty twenty five equity speaker series, may your motion?
Summon.
Second? Discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, Mr. President. I don't know if people are aware, but, uh, this outfit is gonna be paid forty thousand dollars. Is that correct, uh, uh?
Yes.
Uh, is that coming from shake funds or the general fund or?
It's a combination of funds, uh, some of it from student equity and some of it from, uh, president's authority.
So they're gonna talk for one hour for forty thousand.
It's a speaker series, Mr. Bruce.
Correct. Two events. One is, yes, for opening day, but the other event is later. He's kind of, he spends a whole day on campus doing student workshops, uh, doing the live performance, and so it will be much more involved.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Passes with a four one vote, this means voting no. Thirteen eleven, approval amendment number one to the contract for service agreement for consulting services between Twenty Second Century Technologies Incorporated and Anl Valley College for Web Development, may your motion?
Summon.
Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen twelve, approval of agreement between Anl Valley Community College District and School Services of California Incorporated for specialized consulting services related to community college finance, legislation, budgeting, and fiscal issues for the period of July first, twenty twenty five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, may your motion?
Summon.
Second? Discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. Um, school services of California Inc., is this the work that they do? Is it charming? What specifically would this be done with? It says finance, legislation, budgeting, and fiscal issue, so.
This, uh, trust me, I mean, this is not, uh, consulting directly. It gives us access to the school services of California, information, their legislative updates, their financial updates, where they advise us on all the, the budget happenings, the changes that happen at state level.
Okay, great, thank you.
And also, uh, it's two hundred thousand dollars, right?
No. Basically ten thousand.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes.
No.
Passes on a four one vote with the student's voting no. Thirteen point eight, approval of master field contract for services with South Mac Industries to provide as needed energy management system repairs from July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, may your motion?
Summon. Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point four, approval of private assignment amendment PAA of Carrier Corporation for the repair to the van life's chiller air conditioning at Long Hill Center, may your motion?
Summon.
Second?
Discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, did we get any money from the insurance company to help us pay for this repair because of the vandalism?
Is it not only the deductible threshold?
What was, what was the deductible?
Yeah. If the duck owes ten thousand, we will be receiving, uh, reverse or the remaining portion.
Well, thank you.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen fifteen, approval of master field contract for services with March Enterprises Incorporated EBA DB sales service from July first, twenty twenty five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, for needed repairs to boilers, may your motion?
Summon.
Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen sixteen, approval of amendment number one to field contract for servicing between Carrier Corporation and Anl Valley Community College for maintenance of chiller boilers and cooling towers, may your motion?
Summon. Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen seventeen, approval of change order for CDC mold pre-construction project number twenty-four dash zero zero eight with unrestricted tunnel class, may your motion?
Summon. Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen eighteen, approval of change orders for carpet assignment to paint project number twenty-two dash zero zero eight with scheduled maintenance funds, may your motion?
Summon.
Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Fifteen nineteen, approval of change orders for sewer hall project number eighteen dash zero two one with major eighty funds, may your motion?
Summon.
Second?
Discussion? Advice?
Affirmative.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen, report to announcement, academic center, Alvin.
Your trustees, President Zulet, Mr. Wang, Charlotte. Uh, I see you all. I apologize for not being here in June, or sorry, in July, at the July meeting, having a family. Uh, and, uh, I try to, I, my mother is eighty-eight, my father ninety-two, and I don't know how many more visits I get, so I try to take it when I can. Um, we are getting ready, obviously, for our new school year, I'll be saying today, this, uh, new semester begins. I personally am always excited for the first day and the new semester. Uh, that's one of the great pleasures of, of, uh, being in this planet work, is that you get these natural endings and endings, and I always look forward to it very much. Um, in addition to preparing for classes, uh, we continue to do, uh, work that you, I've reported to you on before, but I want to, uh, create, uh, a couple of things to support. One of them is the continued work on the Common Core snowboarding project. Uh, this semester, for the very first time, we have six courses on our schedule uh, that are, uh, insane exact number and name and almost identical course content as every other community college in the state. Uh, those include statistics and psychology, one, and then there's a, there's four others, the most popular courses in the system. Uh, there, this includes, uh, some significant changes for students in some cases, uh, and for faculty of course. And we're hoping, I mean, and by the way, also for, uh, just the behind-the-scenes folks, there's a lot that had to make this happen. And, uh, it's starting to continue. I've looked at it before, but I'm just, that work will not be ending anytime soon. And I, I anticipate, um, you know, I, I, I get calls and emails from counselors who say, hey, I'll be still choose mistakes. Because what happened was, it used to be called math one fifteen. Now it's called SAT C one thousand. It's not even listed under math. So if you're looking for it, you have to know to look somewhere else. It's a little complicated, it's gonna continue to happen. Uh, and so we're, we're trying to make all that stuff work, but it is, it's worked. Um, in addition, uh, kind of related to that, I, I did wanna make a comment related to, uh, item thirteen point six on the, uh, item about the statistics, uh, study. Uh, President Zulet, you did mention that, uh, not to be critical, but you mentioned that the curriculum would be was sort of as part of the study, actually, the curriculum, of course, would be the same as every other course, it's really a tool. A technological tool is being experimented with, see if it can help us to learn the course. Uh, and related to that, if you may, I mean, I feel aware that, you know, technology, especially the artificial intelligence technology, is gonna continue to be, uh, a huge thing in our, in our sector. Uh, if you're not aware, Instructure, the company that owns and operates campus partnered with OpenAI at the end of July to create a collaboration and incorporate, uh, advanced artificial intelligence into campus. We don't know yet what that looks like or what that will lead to. Uh, I think it could be really positive. For example, um, if so AI companies have the ability to sort of watermark when someone uses that then, and it could be that this could be, you could build direction into this if you were using the AI inside the learning management system, that you could also say, hey, if there, we had no issue, this was done by the AI within the campus. There's pretty some really positive things here, but we all, we don't know. And it's a brand-new collaboration that I think really bears, uh, notice and paying attention by the college, by faculty, and by students. So it's gonna be, uh, you know, something to be very aware of. And related to that, also, you know, ChatGPT five is just being released in the very near future, not already. And it apparently does amazing things, uh, that are hard to imagine. The, the, our, our world has changed right before our very eyes. Um, I'll conclude first by my, my usual way, by highlighting the work of a faculty member. Uh, today I wanna talk about Kevin North. He is our only someone television full-time faculty member, and he is also the visual arts art teacher. Since he wears an adjunct period, Kevin has dedicated his time and energy to build the film and fellowship program and serves students. Two years ago, he restarted the annual ABC Film Festival, and we saw growth in the festival within the first year, you said. Uh, Kevin works with the local high school, great students' films, and students to the ABC campus, as well as showcasing our students' work and worldwide and different films. Additionally, Kevin is an integral part of the annual Arts Management Festival, as well as my annual major spare. He has received a strong workforce grant and updated the film equipment the students use, and he has applied to our purpose grant, so he can update our green screen room and offer current industry standard educational opportunities. After that project is completed, he will move on to renovating one of the older lecture halls into a signature screening room. However, despite all that great work, what really stands out about Kevin is his teaching. He is one of our best instructors, putting in the time and effort to teach and make experience here at ABC best camp. His students and colleagues love him. He ensures that he is advocate for students and for his program and ultimately for ABC. Thanks.
Thank you. And about the college betteration teachers, about students, Bob?
Uh, Dr. Helsker wrote, uh, email to a faculty member, and they were moved to their personal items by August thirteenth. Uh, that was very short notice. They were traveling off-contract. Their items were stored for a year with the permission of the dean and the knowledge of the administration. Now, I wrote to, uh, Dr. Helsker, and I say, follow. I also note there is no board policy, I can find written rule or provision in the collective bargaining agreement that addresses employee financial responsibility for the removal of storage for personal property permitted on district premises. If such a policy exists, please provide to me for my review. Absent that, and holding such cause now, without prior agreement, would constitute a unilateral change of that terms and conditions of employment. The connection between, between this and the law firms is, it's my opinion that this explosion in hiring law firms is to simply fight back against the union that will fight for the rights guaranteed in the collective bargaining agreement and state law. So the question I have to ask is, regal females, uh, or listen to me, regal females, why was that necessary? Why was it necessary to threaten, you're gonna have to cover the costs given the conditions surrounding that? It, it, there could have been a good faith effort, something along the lines of, you know, this may be short notice. Uh, however, it would be helpful that we could get these things moved by the state, et cetera, and then working with the faculty member believing in the best in them. Because we actually responded to the district with a plan that wouldn't put an undue burden on him. But since there was just this whole response, the decision they made was, I just need to get it out because I don't wanna have this fight because it would go to curbs, it would go to civil litigation rather than drag on for years, but then I'm paying income fees and that sort of thing. So I just need to get it done. So that's what happened, and it was not fair. What's also not fair, in my opinion, is this email that went out to adjunct faculty at Gopher Price, though, sent by Director of Human Resources, Harmon Miller, Dr. Helsker, uh, Mr. Haynes, Senator Pete, Trump, Carly, and so the, uh, we're all copied on this. It says, good afternoon, you're receiving this communication in accordance with head code in seven four seven seven. At this time, ABC, last advised you as a temporary adjunct employee for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You receive an assignment for one of the twenty-five, twenty-six term, you will receive an updated offer of employment with specified assignment including the length of the assignment salary and term of employment. Please note that any offer of employment may be canceled at any time as education code in seven six six five prevents the community college district government order terminate the appointment of a temporary employee at the end of the day or week, whichever is appropriate. Should you have any questions about this communication, please contact. I forwarded this to an individual, and they said it's not inconsistent with head coded seven four seven seven. However, it is partial language. Addicts receive that statement when they're hired, they receive it in the contract. So eight seven four seven seven is complied with in that process. So why was this necessary? Is it to frighten addicts and to say not fighting for their academic freedom rights? Or is it cajoling them into being quiet at appropriate moments and, and with district requests and so on, and maybe in violation of their rights? This could have gone about a completely different way. A faculty member responded to this and asked two questions. They asked, is this being provided simply as an information item for our targeting need or assessment without cause? We have not received a response to those questions.
Thank you. And about College Federation of Class Life, please, no one is here for that tonight. Forty-four, top management supervisor of administrative employees, Asher Otis.
Good evening. As, as you prepare for the first day of the fall semester on that day, I want to acknowledge the tireless work happening across our campus. Every department, every team, every individual is working to ensure we're ready to welcome our students and send them up for success. Today was buzzing as it was the first day of summer shore, so we had, uh, our younger group of students, uh, finally know where we're on campus. On behalf of TMSA, I want to extend our gratitude to President Zelt and executive team for hosting a wonderful two-day banquet. On behalf of TMS, I wanna extend our gratitude to President Zeller and executive team for hosting a wonderful two-day management retreat along the course of Chalchala Court. Over those two days, we engaged valuable training, collaborative discussions, deep data dive, strategic plan focused on how we can lead our teams and the institutional closing edge of gaps and success rates. What stood out most was the open and productive conversations we had, not only about how we can better serve our faculty, staff, students, and community, but also the executive team asking how they can better support our efforts. It was a refreshing meeting of the minds and a powerful reminder that we are all on the same team, showing up every day with the same mission, to serve students. It's often said that if you want to know what an organization's value, look at where it stands this time. The fact that we dedicated these two days to strengthening collaboration, aligning on goals, sharing strategies to better serve students, serve students, speaks volumes. It's meaningful investment in our collective success and inspiring way to kick off what promises to be a wonderful year. With that said, I wanna highlight the work of one of our hardest working members, Director of the Brownland Brown. She has created a vast social media presence and a footprint that ABC not had before, at least in my eleven years here. She finds a way to make sure that ABC is both present, both virtually and physically, seemingly everywhere throughout our community and in all of the local high school. She is working extremely hard and does it with love and life for this institution and the community that we serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Associate Student Organization, Dustin Mala.
Hi, how are you guys doing? My name is Joseph Rosen, last semester of student athlete, uh, student achievement. Uh, this is, uh, presenting on behalf of best of all, so, pretty chesties, Zeller, yes. Uh, ASO has been, uh, working to, working to support student engagement, build community through initiative events collaboration. To start, in July, the SS Triple C presented a PowerPoint to ASO board, a parliamentary governance, our national conference, and what that means to students who will be collaborating with them in this year's Club Rush to raise awareness for the SS Triple C and the nine plus one of rights. Uh, this October, ASO is planning to present to the C's Altitude Leadership Conference to help strengthen awareness and what uniqueness that the student body and program brings to you at ABC. Uh, in, in celebration of graduating students, we will be sponsoring commencement gifts for the class of twenty twenty six for future classes to come, uh, messed that up, sorry, uh, for classes to come as well. Uh, to support, to continue supporting academic engagement, we sponsor the cash prizes for the Constitutional SA contest. We encourage student engagement and build activity. We are doing this, uh, all, we are doing this by engaging in events and initiatives I mentioned earlier. One of such events is the ASO will be sponsoring an annual food truck event, uh, initially introduced by students James Tennerd and Elena Henderson. People gave this will not only bring students together, but also create a fun, welcoming atmosphere on campus to help her strengthen and build community. Uh, finally, ASO will be volunteering at the OBS upcoming fall event on September twenty fifth to further our commitment to support the programs and serve the students on the campus, so, thank you.
Thank you. Amo Valley College Foundation, dive with them.
I'm impressed.
Well, I'm glad. Opps, Superintendent President, Dr. Jennifer Zellwatt?
Hey, trustee, there's signature, the, since our last meeting, there are many activities and efforts to boost our enrollment and encourage students to take more classes. Student Services and the Palmdale Center hosted registration event at Coise, they were business service students. Our director of outreach, new enrollment, uh, and her mighty and leading staff hosted a table at the Amo Valley Lee Market Guest Train. And I wanna give a special shout out to Tyler, an outreach student worker, Robson Brown, Hystein, and Leo Ayala for bravery to heat to spread the ABC opportunities throughout the valley. In preparation for Fall twenty twenty five, our athletics department held plans training in Cedar Hall with great zeal, the coaches, trainers, volunteers, and staff together. Together, they filled up the midsize lecture space here in Cedar Hall, and I know that we will have a great series of sporting events for student athletes and community to enjoy. Last Thursday and Friday, the entire CMS and leadership team met for a two-day retreat. The time together was meaningful as we heard a wonderful keynote from Punchito Ramirez about design and behavior. His example of meeting a community's needs in the construction of ADALTA perfectly fit where we are, psychologists. We aspire to meet the goals and objectives put forward by the board. The leadership team exchanged wonderful ideas, worked in cross-functional teams, grew in collegiality, and learned from each other over the course of two days. It was a powerful way for us to begin a year of unified and purpose and intention. This morning, I had the privilege of addressing the new faculty orientation. Having met all of them in interviews, it was exciting to see them again in their new capacities to interact faculty, ready to contribute positively to the students and culture of Amo Valley College. Special thanks to the academic senate and the new faculty orientation team for putting this together. Looking at numbers compared to Fall twenty twenty four and Fall twenty twenty five, thank you, we are up an impressive one thousand four hundred and four students. So in Fall twenty twenty four, we had a headcount of eleven thousand two hundred and sixty eight. And as of today, which we still have the rest of the week to go, before the first day of classes, we're at twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy two. When we look at our FTES, uh, in Fall twenty twenty four, we had three thousand nine hundred and three. And again, as of today, we have four thousand one hundred and thirty eight. So, as you can see, these numbers will continue to grow over the next week, and as historical patterns show, there tends to be a drop close to census. But, um, the charts that the board has on their reports show, uh, the, the growth in the graphs, um, we, if they continue, uh, as the trend shows, uh, we will still be ahead. As we look forward to the semester, we will turn our efforts to retention and success to ensure that our students achieve their educational goals. Thank you for all the.
Thank you. More member comments, student trustee?
All, all of them left. Um, I'd like to say, I'll be thanking to those student athletes for coming out and being here for the board meeting, and then also the directors and coaches of the athletic department for being such a great help.
Jarvis?
Data.
Ms. Ridge, uh, I'm looking forward to football season, and, uh, everybody has a brave week.
I just wanna say that, uh, as we approach opening day on Monday, I'm gonna sort of remind everybody something that I tell myself periodically, that what we do to enforce students matters. And a lot of our new students, uh, coming to Amo Valley Community College on Monday, our incoming freshmen who are probably scared to death and questioning their, their, uh, even ability to be in a college class at times. And I would just like to ask everyone who has the pleasure to build a relationship with a student to understand that each and every one of these students, no matter where they come from, are worthy of intellectual respect. And I think Amo Valley Community College has been known for that. Uh, I was a student here, and I don't think that has changed. And so have a great opening day.
Give us a trouble. Kevin North. Now, we wanna know the secrets of Kevin's success. He worked for us at the city of Palmdale. He was shot in the enchanted fairy garden, and you should ask him to dance for us sometime. Okay, uh, we have no need to go back into co-sessing, so beginning of our next meeting is September eighth, twenty twenty five. We are in church.